All right, good evening, everyone. We are going to go ahead and start the Tempe City Council regular council meeting agenda this evening. Item number one is called to order. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. I'd now like to invite everyone who's willing and able to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you so much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up here, we have item number four, our meeting minutes, which I'm going to be assisted this evening by Councilmember Chin, but she's first going to read our native land acknowledgement statement.
Thank you, Mayor. We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time memorial. These ancestral lands of the Ootam, known as the Pima, Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Ootam of the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Gila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action. I would now like to submit for, submit a motion for approval of item 4A, approval of city council meeting minutes.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Chin and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. Okay, that's okay, I want to do a voice work. Okay, and that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent.
I would now like to submit a motion for the acceptance of items 4B1 through 4B8.
It's been moved by Councilmember Chin and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. Just gonna clear the board. There we go. And that item also passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. All right. Next up here, we have item five, reports and announcements. I have a number of announcements this evening, so I'm gonna head down front. I'd like to see if the family of Catherine Mayorga is here. Oh. Come on, come on down. Okay, no, we're gonna, I will, you know, I'll hold off on that one for a couple, then we'll come back to it, just to, I think we're trying to give some people a couple more minutes to get here, so, it'd be perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, next up here, item 5A, Tempe Day of Prayer proclamation. Does anyone, would you like to come join me up front here for that? No, you're, you're all welcome, come on down. Don't be shy. All right. Thank you all for joining me. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas Tempe interfaith fellowship, open to all faith traditions, is leading an observance of a Tempe Day of Prayer on the National Day of Prayer with the themes of 'There is unity in community' and 'Praise well with others.' And whereas leaders and citizens of our nation are afforded the privilege of prayer. And whereas we unite with fellow citizens to exercise the freedom we have to gather in prayer with thankfulness while seeking divine guidance, provision, protection, and purpose for the benefit of every individual in our city. And whereas we give thanks for those who maintain our freedoms and ask for peace throughout our state, city, nation, and world. And whereas we give thanks for our healthcare workers, our educators and students, our first responders, our businesses, and places of employment, our freedom of press, our places of worship, and our families and friends. Now therefore I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare May 4th, 2023 as Tempe Day of Prayer in Tempe, Arizona." Welcome again. Loving it, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mattel, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, appreciate it, good to see you. The next proclamation I have is for Mental Health Awareness Month, and that reads, "Whereas the City of Tempe, Community Health and Human Services, and CARE7 are recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month," and I should also bring up, Chris, you want to come on up, man, and your team? Why, why not, you know? Come on up. I said team, come on up. I just figured, I just launched into the reading, and I'm like, wait a minute, I see Chris Charler right here up front. "And whereas mental wellness is vitally important as our community continues to deal with the long-term impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas we are encouraging everyone in the community to focus on the healing value of connecting, prioritizing mental health, and acknowledging that it's okay to not be okay. And whereas no one should feel alone in their struggle and should know that help is available for those in need. And whereas CARE7, the city's crisis response program, offers 24/7 crisis response services, counseling and support groups, youth specialists, and victim and veteran services. And whereas CARE7 encourages residents to consider how they can make a difference in the lives of a friend, family member, or neighbor who might be struggling. And whereas the City of Tempe joins advocates nationwide to promote an important message during Mental Health Awareness Month and beyond, you are not alone. Now therefore I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona." Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Absolutely. So just really quickly here, just wanted also to say, we're here to announce Heat Awareness Week and also speak about the impacts of extreme heat as well as its challenges. Extreme heat often results in the highest number of annual deaths among all weather-related disasters in our country. Just last year, there were 425 heat-associated deaths in Maricopa County, a 25% increase from the previous year. Tempe is experiencing hotter temperatures earlier in the spring, later in the fall, and for longer periods of time, dangerously affecting our everyday lives and health. Some Tempeans are impacted more than others by heat, particularly the unsheltered, the elderly, youth, outdoor workers, and energy-burdened households. If you want to help out, please stop by 100 Mile Brewing Company, who is partnering with the Hope Team to provide bottled water for residents of Tempe this summer. Throughout the months of Tempe, throughout the months of Tempe, throughout the month of May, there's a new 13th month called Tempe, apparently. Throughout the month of May, the brewery is collecting cases of water, and diners who make a donation will receive $5 off of their food bill. So make sure to visit tempe.gov/savesummer to learn about the resources and educational materials available to our residents, to stay informed, and to help cope with extreme heat. So, uh, let's see, is there anyone here, I see Breann Fisher in the back, is there anyone else who wants to come up to, come accept this proclamation? See, I called her out, she's coming.
Yay, Breann.
Yay, Breann. Hi, Breann. So this proclamation reads, "Whereas the City of Tempe joins the Arizona Department of Health Services and the City of Phoenix in recognizing Arizona Heat Awareness Week with education, awareness, and actions to take around hydration and preparedness for extreme heat. And whereas Tempe, along with the greater metropolitan region, will be experiencing multiple days of 110-degree temperatures this summer, and these levels of extreme heat have disproportionate negative impacts on our community. And whereas according to the Arizona Department of Health Services, almost 2,800 heat-related deaths have occurred in Arizona from 2011 to 2021. And whereas the City of Tempe is preparing this summer with nine heat relief locations in addition to the solarized mobile cooling center Jenny's Trailer, all of which allow any individual to come to hydrate and seek respite from the summer sun, and if needed, get connected to shelter and social services. And whereas the Sustainability and Resilience Office has partnered with RAIL CDC to prepare home energy kits that include LED bulbs, smart plugs, utility stipends, and other items to help high-energy-burdened households with home energy costs. And whereas through Community Health and Human Services and nonprofit and government partners, resources are available for those who need help paying rent or utility bills or making emergency home repairs that threaten their health and safety. And whereas the City of Tempe asks its residents, businesses, and organizations to prepare their friends, families, colleagues, and neighbors to get educated and prepare for the extreme heat, and consider the City of Tempe as a partner and a resource to help mitigate vulnerabilities to this threat. Now therefore I, Corey D. Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare May 1st through May 5th, 2023 as Arizona Heat Awareness in Tempe, Arizona."
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before Breann leaves, I want to embarrass her just a little further.
Uh-oh. You see, she, you see, her page picked up a little bit when you said that.
You know, in the theme of Heat Awareness Month, I just thought that it would be appropriate time to mention that this past weekend, the City of Tempe, through no small part of the work of the Sustainability and Resilience Office and a tremendous amount of other city staff, won the prestigious Chris Cordia Award at the Arizona Ford Environmental Excellence Award Ceremony, excuse me, and that was for our 2022 Climate Action Plan, which is designed to squarely address things like extreme heat in Tempe. And this was among many, it was our heated competition, and we were selected.
Was that deliberate? I want to know.
It wasn't, but I'll, I'll roll with it.
But it worked, it worked.
But Councilmember Hodge was there on behalf of council. It was an amazing night, and really just a tremendous award for staff and for the city. Climate action, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Shane. The next proclamation I have is for National Peace Officer Memorial and National Police Week. All right, come on, join me. So this proclamation reads, "Whereas as a nation, we honor the memory and sacrifice of fallen law enforcement officers during Peace Officer Memorial Week so dedicated by President John F. Kennedy in 1962. And whereas Tempe police officers and their families are members of our community striving to earn trust, build partnerships, and keep the peace, protect lives, safety, and property, uphold the U.S. Constitution, and respect the rights of all those with whom we engage. And whereas Tempe police responded to 141,917 total calls for service in 2022 and approximately 12,000 calls each month. And whereas since the first known line of death duty in 1791, over 23,000 law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice according to the National Law Enforcement Memorial Fund. And whereas the safety and quality of life of our community depends in great measure on the dedication, capability, compassion, and daily service of Tempe police officers. Now therefore I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare May 14th through the 20th, 2023 as National Peace Officer Memorial and National Police Week in Tempe, Arizona." All right, my next proclamation here is for the 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Man, I feel like I'm looking at the two of them right here. Karen Dorastia and Karen Donkova, do you want to come join me for a sec?
Yay!
So this proclamation reads, "Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare April 30th through May 6th, 2023 as 54th Annual Professional Clerks Week in Tempe, Arizona." All right. And now I'm gonna go to item 5A1, which is the Catherine Mayorga Lifetime of Service Recognition. And I'd like to see if the family of Catherine Mayorga is here to come join me up front? Please come join me, yeah. So Catherine was a dear friend to myself and all of us on the city council, who knew her very well. We unfortunately lost her very recently, but she was one of the first people I met when I moved to Tempe back in 2003 and was getting involved in city politics, and we all very much dearly miss her, and I'd love to see too if the council would be willing to come join me down here for this. Because once again, she wasn't just my friend, she was friends frankly to everyone on this council, and to so many people sitting in this room today, so many members of our city staff. So, the proclamation reads, "Since 1972, Catherine Mayorga has been a community leader within the City of Tempe. She dedicated a significant portion of her life to serving her community, and her work will leave a lasting impact on future generations. Catherine's contribution to the public has helped make Tempe a better place to live, work, play, and learn. And whereas for many years Catherine served the residents and businesses of Tempe through her public service efforts, including her time with the Tempe Chamber of Commerce. Her values, diligence, and accomplishments have and will continue to shape the Tempe community. And whereas Catherine was a strong advocate for education and Arizona residents, her support for school funding, STEAM, and higher education has paved the road to success for many young minds. And whereas Catherine received a diversity award from the Human Relations Commission for her commitment to fostering diversity at every workplace she has ever been employed at. She worked to give people of diverse backgrounds, ethnicities, and genders by way of providing employment opportunities. And whereas to her friends and colleagues, Catherine was the nickname Queen." My, I'll just say really quickly, my nickname was Opie. So, so even when I became mayor, she would call me and say, "Mayor Opie, I gotta talk to you about something going on in the neighborhood." Almost everyone she met received a unique and quirky nickname, and Catherine was able to remember them all. Those who knew her best knew that her nicknames came from the heart. This was just one of her many unique and endearing qualities that made her loved by all. And whereas the City of Tempe will miss Catherine for her leadership, sense of humor, and commitment to the Tempe community. Now therefore I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare May 4th, 2023 as Catherine Mayorga Day Lifetime of Service Recognition Award in Tempe, Arizona." All right. That next brings us to item 5B, City Managers Reports and Announcements. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is continuing on the awards theme, just wanted to bring it to your attention that the Tempe History Museum won the 2023 Institutional Award of Excellence from the Museum Association of Arizona. You can see it there in the photograph on the slide here. It was awarded for research that resulted in the Tempe Renaming Project, and I could tell you from chairing that, that committee and from the, the information that all of you received in your decision-making, you know the degree and the dedication that that staff did to make that a reality. Also for the community collaboration on the Guadalupe exhibition, and also excellence in its work in the areas of collection, preservation, research, interpretation, and education. We recently on the third floor put up a number of historic photographs all around on the, right by the offices, and that's the direct result of the archiving and the collection and the careful work that our history museum staff does. So it is with great pleasure that I bring to you this great award that the history museum staff won earlier this year. Congratulations. Brenda Abney's right down there in the front row, and she and her staff deserve tremendous accolades. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right, next up here, we have item number six, Public Appearances. Just once again, want to read our protocol for this evening. Tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are available on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. I will now read the protocol for ensuring the proper conduct of city council meetings. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both outside and inside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted? I will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, I will issue a verbal warning and let them know that continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If still no cooperation, I will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that continued disruptive behavior will be lead to removal from the council chambers. If still no cooperation, then I will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only to escort them out of the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrested by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest individuals if they refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to, should anyone be asked to be removed from this meeting, I will recess the meeting. That brings us to, make sure I have my comment cards. Item six, Public Appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. Appearances shall be limited to an aggregate total of 60 minutes. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of reference and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific action item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. With that, I will get to the cards in the order in which I receive them. The first speaker I have this evening is Stanley Nickpon. Oh, well, I was gonna, oh, sorry. Okay, I, well, I can read that too, just really quickly, you stay, Mr. Nickpon. Just wanted to note to my colleagues, I was talking, there were a later item on the agenda, so item 8B6 is actually being removed from tonight's agenda, so a public hearing will not be held tonight on this item, and the city council will not be considering it this evening. The city is continuing to evaluate the topic of a prevailing wage ordinance in order to bring the item back for consideration in the future. Part of the continuing evaluation will include determining cost estimates if the ordinance is approved. So anyone who would wish to speak on item 8B6 may still address the council during the public appearance segment at the beginning or end of the meeting, but the council will not be able to engage in conversation with you about your views since the item has been removed for this evening. So once again, that's item 8B6 that's been removed from the agenda. With that, Mr. Nickpon, I will turn back to you. Good to see you again.
Thank you very much. My name is Stanley Nickpon. I live at 1307 East Cuyahoga, 85284. I am here to represent the 500-plus residents of Sunburst Farms, Buena Vista Rancho, and Cuyahoga, HOA. We all believe that the 328-foot wall that was built at 1710 East Harbor erected by A.J. Singh-Nirwan is illegal, immoral, and unethical. It has always been our belief that the City of Tempe, Tempe City Council has three important oath guaranteed rules of governance. The first is safety, the second is financial fiduciary oversight, and thirdly, to enforce city codes and adhere to developmental rules and stipulations. On the matter of safety and financial matters, Mayor Woods, A+, doing great. On the area of, the third area, which is code enforcement, improvements can be made. Our legitimate concern to have the wall removed, have the, have the wall removed has taken nearly three years, taken three years to get to this point. And after many FOIA requests, countless emails, texts, meetings, and personally being offered $100,000 by the City of Tempe to go sue, sue Mr. Nirwan, which we declined, we respectfully, we are not any closer to the agreement despite the, the best efforts of our attorneys to do so. And Mayor Woods, some council members telling us that the matter has been taken care of really hasn't taken place. In 1995, I was personally involved with then-Mayor, Mayor Neil Giuliano and staff with the Shady Lanes Development, both as a resident as well as a member of the then Tempe Redevelopment Review Commission. The rules and stipulation for that development were explicit. The bridle path would remain at 30 feet in width for the enjoyment of equine riders, bicycles, shortcut for kids to school, hiking, and many other amenities for all other residents of Tempe. Mr. Nirwan took 10 feet and built a brick wall 325 feet in length, built on top of the main Tempe water line that feeds the water to the citizens of Cuyahoga, HOA. The aggrieved residents of Buena Vista Rancho, Sunburst Farms, Cuyahoga, HOA, and really all citizens require that the city council abide by all city agreements, whether it's with Tempe Marketplace, the State Farm Building, ASU, Coyote Entertainment District, just to name a few, as a matter of your oath of governance as our elected official.
That's time. Thank you.
So rude. Thank you, guys, for at least not coming in and...
Okay. Next up, the speakers here are all for item 8B6. So, once again, that item's been removed, but obviously, if people still would like to address the council, you have the ability to. So I'm going to just go ahead and call them in the order I received them. First card I have here is from Nathan Fernstall. Is Nathan Fernstall here?
I think he's on virtually.
Oh, okay. Is he in the... Okay. Okay, sounds good, Mr. Fernstall. Please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Nathan Fernstall. By the way, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council members, for the opportunity to testify today. Like I said, my name is Nate Fernstall, and I live in Tempe. I work in the steel framing and drywall trades, and I'm also the incoming board president of the American Subcontractors Association of Arizona. I'm here today to speak on behalf of our members and in the opposition to adopt -- excuse me, the adoption of prevailing wage ordinance for the following reasons. To my knowledge, there has been no public stakeholder process on this ordinance, and certainly not one involving more than a small subset of the trade's workforce. Any city should reach out to those most impacted by its policies before passing them, and that's not happened yet. Beyond that, this ordinance would hurt emerging, small, and minority-owned contractors the most. These subcontractors represent a large segment of ASA membership. The additional red tape imposed on them would be a serious compliance burden they may not feel is worth the cost to meet. Even legitimate, stable, safe contractors, whose skilled tradespeople could perform top-quality work for Tempe, will be shut out of the process. This limits opportunities for small businesses already dealing with rising inflation and a potential recession. In the long run, it also results in fewer competitive bids for City of Tempe projects, which drives up the price for taxpayers on public jobs. It will increase construction costs and do little that our members are not already doing to improve wages, quality of work, safety, and training. If you feel there is an issue on City of Tempe jobs, then there are better approaches to addressing them. Rather than wages being dictated in a way that does nothing to put red tape in the way of the business community and the city itself, let's work together to find solutions that have a positive impact on construction companies and the trades alike. For those reasons, I'd like you to vote no on prevailing wage ordinance. Thank you again for the opportunity to share my thoughts today.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Wes McClure. Is Mr. McClure here or in the virtual audience? Not here? Okay. And I will move on to the next speaker here, which is Luke Douglas. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Luke Douglas. I live in Phoenix, and I was here tonight to speak on item 8B6 on behalf of the Arizona Building Construction Trades Council. Since the items have been pulled, I don't think I'll comment on it tonight, but I do look forward to seeing it on the agenda again, and we'll be back. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Ricardo Carlo. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mayor, council, Ricardo Carlo. I'm the president of the Associated Minority Contractors of Arizona. I live in Phoenix, Arizona, but I represent the entire state. I just want to thank you for taking a step back and not moving on this issue. I ask you to please to work with stakeholders and small businesses and find out if this prevailing wage is beneficial to them or not, because in a lot of ways, it's going to hurt a lot of small businesses. But I just want to thank you for taking a step back. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. All right, that's all the cards I have this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address the city council? And if so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence. Yes, please come forward.
Hello, I'm Joshua Moore. I'm the executive director of the Subcontractors Association. Nate is my incoming board president, the one who was just online virtually. And I'd like to echo what Ricardo says. Very much appreciate you guys taking time to do a little bit of analysis on this ordinance and see what some of the impacts might be. And I'd also echo him in encouraging you guys to do a full stakeholder process involving a representative sample of the trade's workforce, and more than just a small sliver of the trade's workforce. Most of my members, 68%, there's a couple hundred specialty subcontractors that I represent all across the state, 68% of those earn or bring in $25 million or less in revenue a year, 47% are at $5 million or less in revenue a year. These are small businesses. Many of them are already working for the city and doing projects, and they're exactly the kind of people who are going to be impacted by this ordinance. And so I would love an opportunity to put you in touch with them and just have a full discussion, not just on the financial impacts, but on the impacts to those kinds of businesses that would love to be able to continue working for the city. So with that, I'll leave you, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I will close that portion of the agenda. Before I get to the consent agenda, I know there were a couple of items. So really quickly here, I want to -- so I know Ms. Justice brought up a couple of items that I know one is on the consent agenda here. I believe it's 7B16. And let me see if I can pull up what that one is before we get into the consent agenda. 7B16 is to award a professional services contract to Dibble and Associates Consulting Engineers Incorporated for the Arizona State University Campus Waterline Replacements Phase 4 Katy Mall from University Drive to south of Tyler Mall. Is there anyone from staff who can actually address that item this evening? Okay, see Tara Ford.
Yes, Mayor and council. That will not -- this project will not impact the North Waterline Replacement Project. We are verifying that that is the right CIP fund that it's coming out of, but it will not impact the North Waterline Replacement Project. That answers Ms. Justice's question. Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you for the clarification. And I know the other item that I know is on the non-consent agenda, but if that -- okay, Madam City Attorney, can I keep going, or do I need to get through the consent agenda first?
That's fine, Mayor, but the other thing that you might want to consider doing is voting on the matter that was just discussed.
Okay.
Because we polled it, so...
Okay. So I -- can I take the consent agenda as a whole since it wasn't -- or...
That works. That's fine. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, so, item number seven, consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council, unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the clerk prior to the agenda item coming up for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. The consent agenda this evening is listed as miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A8, awards of bids and contracts 7B1 through 7B16, and resolutions items 7C1 through 7C3. Do I have a motion, or does anyone -- actually, I first ask, any item whatever that's designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have one of those items removed, please get my attention now. Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public wishing to address the council on a consent agenda public hearing item?
Nothing additional.
Thank you so much. Counsel, okay. All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. That will take us, then, to item eight, non-consent agenda. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. First item under the section is 8A1, which is to set a public hearing date of June 1, 2023, for the downtown Tempe Enhanced Services Improvement District Assessments for fiscal year 2023-2024. Counsel, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote. That item passes five to zero with Councilmember Hodge and Councilmember Keating absent. The next item under the section is 8A2, which is to hold the public hearing to receive public comment and adopt a resolution authorizing the annual Community Development Block Grant, Home Program, and Emergency Solutions Grant Action Plan for fiscal year 2023-2024. Counsel, any comments or questions? Also, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the council on this item this evening? Seeing that, I'll go ahead and close that. Do I have a motion? That sounds like it's been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. Hey. And that item passes five to zero with Councilmember Hodge and Councilmember Keating absent. The commentary up here sometimes is fun. The next item under the section is 8A3, which is to hold a public hearing on the biennial audit for development fees for water, wastewater, police, fire, street, and park, and recreational facilities for the period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2022. Counsel, any questions for staff on this item? Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item, please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. It's been a motion made by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams.
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt?
Yes.
There is no vote. It's just a hearing item.
Oh, you're right. That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Well, then, let's see here. All right, I guess if councilmembers want to withdraw their motions, then?
Doesn't happen.
All right, sounds good. That'll move us then to item number 8A4, which is the second item I know that this justice brought up, which is to approve the utilization of an 18-month National Association of State Procurement Officials Cooperative Contract with Nalid Services for Temporary Staffing Services. I see Lisette Camacho. Would you like to address this item?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is an 18-month cooperative agreement with Nalid Services. The $3.5 million is a total not to exceed amount, or the maximum we can spend on the contract, but it doesn't mean we're going to spend that for the 18 months. It's for temporary staffing services, so we use this on a needed basis when we have vacancies within the city, and it is a citywide contract.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Ms. Justice, does that answer the question you posed, or... That's a lot of money. Okay. Yeah, no, it is a lot of money. Counsel, any comments or discussion on that item? No? Okay. Is there a motion on item 8A4? It's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote. And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. The next item under the section is 8A5, which is to adopt a resolution providing the sale and issuance of City of Tempe, Arizona General Obligation Bonds, Series 2023A, and General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2023B, authorizing the execution and delivery of certain documents, providing for the annual levy of a tax for the payment of the bonds, delegating the authority to approve certain related matters, and authorizing and ratifying related actions, agreements, and documents. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion? Moved by Vice Mayor Adams, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That item passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. The next item under the section is 8A6, which is to approve a two-year contract renewal with Rimini Street Incorporated for the purchase of third-party software maintenance and support services for PeopleSoft Financials, Human Resources, and Payroll. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. That item passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. The last item under the section is 8A7, which is to approve the utilization of an 18-month Sourcewell Cooperative Contract with National Automotive Parts Association, Division of Genuine Parts Company, to operate an onsite inventory part store. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote. That item passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. The next item on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for May 18, 2023. The first item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R2 to R1 PAD with a planned area development overlay to establish development standards and a development plan review for a new three-story attached single-family residential development consisting of eight units for Vidana Tempe, located at 2447 East University Drive. The applicant is in light 10 architecture. Is there any presentation from the applicant?
Yes.
Yes, sir, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Amis Dan from Denver, Colorado, and I'm here to present my -- I'm the actual developer. My architect's not here tonight. I want to thank you guys for taking the time to allow me to present this, as well as thanking the planning department from Tempe for working with us for over a year to get to this point. Just as a quick orientation for everybody, this is the properties we're talking about in East University, just east of the 101. What we're asking for tonight is for the city council to review our proposal to adjust the current zoning, which is R2, to the R1 with the PAD overlay. Allows us to build two additional units, in essence, and also the development plan review for the site plan, landscaping plan, and the building elevations. So this is a quick slide that shows the current zoning of our property, as well as the surrounding properties. We're in the brown -- sorry, the brown in the middle, zoned currently three lots that are zoned R2, surrounded by both commercial and R1 residential properties. Down below is what the proposed zoning would result in, which is a single lot zoned R1 with the PAD overlay. This -- and I'm so sorry. This is sort of -- well, this is a depiction of the density map from the 2040 general plan from the city of Tempe, and that's what we sort of use as our starting point to develop this project. According to the density that is projected for this site or the target, it's actually nine units for this lot. And so we're not asking for nine, we're just asking for two additional units. On the right is the current zoning characteristics, as well as the proposed P -- sorry, R1 PAD zoning. And I'd like to just call your attention to a couple of important points. One is the maximum height. Under R2 current zoning, we're permitted 30 feet and up to 33 feet of building height. And under the proposed P -- sorry, R1 PAD, it's also 30 feet. So we're not asking for any allowance or adjustment to that. Additionally, the rear setback is set currently at 15 feet under the R2 zoning, and we're also not changing that under the R1 PAD zoning, also 15 feet. This is the picture of the current lot as it sits, or lots, three adjacent lots that have been vacant, as far as I can tell, over 50 years, sitting directly on East University Boulevard, or sorry, Road. This is our proposed site plan, driven mostly by consideration for fire safety and refuse from the city of Tempe. We've gone through several iterations over the year. To get to this, just quick, quick, high-level, I wanted to point out that these are four buildings of two units each, single-family, for-sale product. Each has two-car garage with pre-wiring for EV chargers. We also have a dog park in the southeast corner of our development adjacent to the guest parking. We have a total of 28 parking spots, four guest parking spots, and 24 private parking spots designated. We have engaged a landscape architect already, who's developed this general plan, and you'll see it in a little more detail later on, of species that are native to this area, with special attention to trying to blend in as best we can with the surrounding neighborhood and properties. This is a rendering of the project from across East University Road, showing the front units. We have rooftop decks on those units. All of the outdoor spaces, whether it be the rooftops or the patios, balconies, are oriented towards the north, towards University Road, or towards the interior of the property, trying to respect the privacy of the surrounding residential neighbors especially. We have a commercial lot to the east of us, not so concerned with that, but also trying to respect all of our neighbors and be a nice, be a good neighbor. This is a depiction of the rear of the property, again, showing that all of the outdoor spaces are oriented towards the north and away from our residential neighbors. We also have planted trees, or we're planning to have trees along the fence line, especially with these rear units that are over 15 feet from -- in the setback, from the... This is a street-level depiction of kind of what we're talking about for the A unit, for the units directly on East University Road. You can sort of see, this is a reasonably accurate landscaping plan that we have rendered here as well. This is a depiction of the -- from the middle of our property, showing the two rows of buildings, front to back, and we have, again, driveway parking, as well as two individual garage spots for those buildings to the left. In terms of our exterior materials, we wanted to have a very simple color palette that blends well with, again, the local area, with durable and appropriate materials. And that's what we think we selected here, again, working with the planning department. This is our detailed landscaping plan, calling out individual species of plants, again, working with the planning department and our landscape architect. I will say that we've been to the DRC last week, or sorry, last month, and we got a unanimous recommendation for approval, and they seem to appreciate our design. So thank you for your time. I can answer your, or try to answer your questions if you have any.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you. Thank you. So we've received some feedback from the neighbors, and what I would simply like to share with you is some encouragement. I encourage you to continue working with our community development staff and the neighbors to address their concerns. I understand you're in conversation with them.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So keep talking. All right.
And I will say that, you know, that's, aside from our neighborhood meeting two months ago, this is the first interaction we've had with the neighborhood as of two days ago. So I don't know where that came from. I knew, these are a lot of the same concerns that were brought up during the neighborhood meeting.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Let me go next to Councilmember Garland.
I thank you. I think the building looks beautiful. I appreciate that and the look of it and what it's going to look like there. I do have a concern. Again, we did get some neighborhood email that was sent in, but I think about this as a neighborhood that's been around since 1945, and those people have not had something that they looked at on their backyard, too, and now you're going to put a three-story building in there. I looked at this when I first was reading through this, and it says that it's a, you can have a 30-foot, you get that right now no matter what, but just because you can, should you? And I do think about that neighborhood because it's very beautiful, it's unique, and it houses just an incredible culture. And I worry, even though as beautiful as your project is, what that could do to the neighborhood. So I, along with Councilmember Chin, would like to see you having discussions and really talking to those neighbors and keeping that dialogue going, because I just think, if I were to vote on this today, I would have voted no, because I just think that this is such a big change for that community, and I want to honor and respect that community and what they have. I do think that, again, it's really, it's that height right next to the houses, and I do think, you said you were going to put in trees. I think that's a great idea, and that was really smart. I would, again, then, just think about the neighbors having people on the third floor, or even on the second floor, being able to look right into their backyards, and that would be really uncomfortable. You wouldn't like it. I don't want it. So anyway, just keep that open dialogue, and I'd like to see what you might be able to come up with by the time we meet again. And again, I think it's beautiful, but if I had to vote today, I would say no.
Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, please, absolutely.
With my presentation? Can I get back into that? So we have a slide that addresses this, because that has been the main concern for the neighbors. Although I will say that none of the neighbors that we actually border showed up to our neighborhood meeting. We've tried to reach out to them after the meeting via one of the attendees and haven't heard anything back from them. So I'd be happy...
I think if you'd like to continue to do that, we'll do what we can to help facilitate that, because, again, I think that they have a very, an incredible voice on this and would like to have a voice in it.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So we, in response to their concerns, we tried to, we developed this sort of rendering, which is both a rendering from the third-floor window down to the south. We've recessed the windows. Initially, they weren't recessed. We put in a partial metal screen to try to block the view down into their backyards. We've, and then we've shown on the right side what that view looks like from their backyards up towards the third-story window. So this is a depiction of what we're looking at, and again, the two trees here for the two neighbors that are immediately adjacent. But yes, I take your point.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I think, just echoing, echoing what they're saying about the neighbors, just making sure they have buy-in. And just a curious question, this, these parcels, were they not owned by these neighbors? Were they not parceled? Were they not the property of those neighbors at one time, or do you even know the history of that?
I don't know the history. What I know is that there were three single-family houses similar to the remainder of the neighborhood on an aerial view from like the 40s or 50s.
Okay.
And that's, I don't know who sold them off, or they were separate parcels, as I understand.
And I know it's possibly, some of those rows are still the existing property owners. They're just fenced off to and then not...
Correct. I don't know if they split their lot.
Yeah, so it's curiosity of just who are the actual owners behind you and just kind of their buy-in. But I think just to reach out and we'll, as a city, I think, you know, help you out, too, just to kind of make sure that we do our due diligence, especially for that neighborhood, Victory Acres and all that area around there is just one of those traditions of Tempe. It's one of the historical, you know, type of venues that we try to respect and make sure that we're doing the right thing within the neighborhood. I absolutely love what you're trying to do with your product, and I know that it's, you're taking advantage of an area. We talk about infill and utilizing infill as best as we can for housing. You're taking advantage of that. I have no complaints. You're trying to mitigate those angles into the backyards. I just, you know, if there's a conversation that comes up, some easy stuff, it might even be as, you can even put a block or two higher for those neighbors, so they don't, you know, have people come in, whatever it may be.
Absolutely. We'd be happy to go up two feet, to eight feet, if that's what...
Right, right. I think those are those touches that I think you might have some tremendous buy-in and whatnot, but please have those conversations.
Thank you so much. All right. Anyone else from the council? Any other comments or questions? I don't have any either. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Just want to reiterate, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for May 18, 2023. The next item under the section is 8B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorized... hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Tempe Golf Limited Liability Corporation, a California corporation for Ken McDonald Golf Course. Is there any kind of a presentation on this item, by chance?
Thank you for having us here. My name's Tom Bugby. I'm the chief operating officer for Korsco, which is the golf management company that owns the subsidiary that would be operating and leasing Ken McDonald Golf Course. So, I'm going to do a quick presentation tonight, just give you a little bit about Korsco and our vision for the golf course. Korsco's a golf management company. We're headquartered in California, established in 1989. We currently manage 43 golf courses across seven states, the vast majority of which are municipal, public agency golf courses. So, that's kind of our specialty and a big reason that we're here today. This is a kind of accumulation of a almost two-year process since we first read the RFP, and we're very excited to have been able to work with city staff and gotten to this point, along with meeting with various community groups along the way. There's four core values that lead our golf management company, and I'm just going to spend a moment to go through those. So, financial performance, community inclusion, stakeholder communication, environmental stewardship, and I will spend a moment on each of those. So, first is financial performance. You know, it's not a secret that you're not in business very long if you don't financially perform, but for us, financial performance, we use that term specifically instead of profit, because financial performance actually has a different definition, especially when you talk about public-private partnerships such as this one. We look at it as we have to be able to partner on capital investments, we have to be able to provide rent to the city, and we have to ensure that golf remains affordable and accessible for the residents of Tempe. Next up is community inclusion. This one's very important to us, primarily operating public agency golf courses. The reality is they're owned by the taxpayers, and the reality is golf's only played by about 10% of the taxpayers. That means there's 90% of the public that owns these golf courses, and typically would not use them for their traditional use. And so, we look at community programming as a big way to service that other 90%. And so, we look at non-golf events, whether that is, you know, we put up a few examples here on these slides, having movie nights out at the golf courses, canned food drives, Easter egg hunts for kids, Halloween open houses. The list goes on and on, but each one of our golf courses is committed to that, and we design these programs specific to the community that we operate within for each individual golf course. Next up is stakeholder communication, and that's part of what we're doing here today. Stakeholders are, are wide, right? Those involved with the golf course, of course, city council, in the case here, the Parks Recreation Golf and Double Butte Cemetery Board. I think I've attended four of those meetings now at this point, and we did get a endorsement from them at the last meeting. We were excited to be able to announce that. Also, the employees, the golfers, the neighbors, and the residents, and local community groups, all these people are invested in the golf course. The reality is, is when you're in business for a long time, you're going to have ups and downs, you're going to have challenges, you're going to have time to celebrate, and only through open and honest communication can you kind of persevere and keep that relationship going in the long term. And the final is environmental stewardship. This is something that's very important to us. Our, our founder attended the first Earth Day, however many years ago that was. We were, we were pushing environmental stewardship long before it was popular to just put on your website. Regardless of size, we're the most decorated golf management company in terms of environmental stewardship. Twice, we've won the President's Award from the Golf Course Superintents Association. No other company's won it once. We have 71 environmental leaders and golf awards, and 21 of our golf courses are Audubon certified, with several more in the process as we speak. This is something we're very proud of and very near and dear to our heart. You know, speaking specifically to Ken McDonald, we want to talk a little bit about the vision for the future. You know, we want it to be a leader in hospitality and service, best in class in golf course conditions. We use the term "class" because it is important, and I want to tie that back. We're not coming in to make this a resort golf course. This is a municipal golf course. We always want to provide the best golf course conditions possible, but as you, if you look at the contract, there's limitations on price, and we very much support that. You know, we're not going to come in here and try to price the residents out of playing golf. We just want to provide the best possible golf course at a reasonable price to them. Capital investment in the golf course, always important, written into our lease, and we're very excited to be able to negotiate that with city staff. It's an ongoing capital commitment, along with a partnership on a new clubhouse out at the facility. For those of you who've been out there, I think that's a long overdue, and a new irrigation system as well. And then the final piece is just obviously that robust calendar of golf and non-golf events, to make sure everyone in the community is using the golf course to its maximum potential. So, with that, I thank you, and we welcome any questions.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I was just curious, I know the YMCA is right there also, and has everybody any communication with the YMCA as far as maybe doing a private partner, private-public partnership?
Not yet, but that is definitely on our radar.
Because I brought it up a number of times, and so-
And thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thanks.
Members of council. Craig Gaitan, Community Service Director. We have as staff initiated those conversations. As soon as, if mayor and council vote in favor of the agreement, we certainly have the conversations with Korsco, with the YMCA as well. They're, the YMCA is interested in having conversations to see where that goes, especially as we look at some preliminary design for the sighting of the clubhouse and see if there's a potential there for some partnership.
Okay, because there's a big parking lot, and it's kind of a waste of space, and I'm just thinking, you know, the YMCA could use some improvements anyway, and, and obviously the golf course, that, that is, you know, Ken, Ken McDonald Pro Shop and things is, you know, really a tear-down in my opinion. So, I just want us to think outside the box on this, because I think it could be a win-win for both the YMCA and for the city, and for the new contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually at Ken McDonald last night, so-
Really?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I wasn't golfing. No, I'm actually, I'm really excited for this. I think it'll be a great addition, that, that course is needed, you know, some TLC for a while, and I know our residents are excited for this too. I do have one concern that I'll share with you. There was, so, as I mentioned, I was at Ken McDonald last night, and there is, anytime there's change, it's scary, right? There is some apprehension amongst the staff there, that maybe they'll, the course will be taken over, and then there'll be kind of cleaning house and bringing in new people, and there's apprehension among groups that use that space for their meetings, events, things like that. Specifically, I'm talking about the Tempe Diablos have their board meetings there. And, look, I said, I said I would bring it up to you, and I would certainly like to have some sort of commitment that those working there today are going to work there once this project's approved, and any existing agreements with, with those kind of charitable groups are honored moving forward.
Yeah, absolutely. Those are very legitimate concerns. I, I will tell you, I'll speak to history. We typically retain 95% plus of the employees. That 5% typically is the employees saying, hey, this is time for change, right? They kind of use it as a catalyst to try something else in life. We like the existing employees for a couple of reasons. One is, we don't have a bus full of employees to pull up, but more importantly is, they have the relationships. They tend to be passionate about the golf course, that's why they're working there, and they know the history, right? And they even know the little tricks, like how do you get that door open? There always jams in the back room, right? So, we very much look forward to, to welcoming the staff. We were able to meet with the maintenance employees today, working through city staff. The existing golf and food and beverage employees work for another company right now, and they want the contract, that other company wants our contract to be approved before we can meet with them, so we're hoping to meet with them two weeks and one day from now. And very much easy for me to commit that, you know, we will be offering the vast majority, if not every single employee, a job moving forward. As far as groups, you know, part of our commitment is, we're going to learn a lot in the first year, right? And so, that's why in our contract is, rates won't change for one year. We're going to honor the existing programs, and we're also going to honor all the existing groups. But going back to our community programming, we want every group out there meeting as poss, meeting there as possible from the community, and that's one of the things we're excited about the new clubhouse. We think we're going to have more opportunities to have more groups and more schools and more fundraisers hosting their events at Ken McDonald.
That's great. I really appreciate that, and, and I know that a lot of people's unease will be, will be addressed with that. I would just ask if you wouldn't mind reaching out to the Diablos organization and just having some sort of conversation with them, because they came to me yesterday, and were like, what's going to happen with this? Are we, are we, wait to find a new spot to meet? And I said, well, I'll speak to them tomorrow, so-
Absolutely happy to do that.
Thank you very much. I'll have staff put you in touch.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Just one more question. The grass is not very good at Ken McDonald on the course, and I'm just wondering if you have some, an action plan for adjusting that?
So, yes and no, right? The, the no part of it is, we got to figure out exactly what's going on out there. I will also say, you know, the irrigation system is aged, right? And, and that's really going to put a strain on even the best maintenance teams in the world, and we do think the maintenance team out there is pretty good. So, we're thrilled that, you know, in our contract is a commitment between us and the city to put a new irrigation system in, so that'll go a long ways. The other part of the no is, we got to learn a lot, right? A lot of it has got to be hands-on experience, but we have a, a deep team, you know, that's one of the nice things about bringing in what we consider a medium-sized management company. We have a lot of people with expertise that'll be involved in trying to figure out how to constantly improve the product out there.
Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anyone have other comments? Councilmember Garland?
Yeah, I'm glad that Councilmember Keating brought up the groups, because I was going to mention the Sunrise Kiwanis Group meets there, in the mornings on every Thursday, and I, I would hate to see them bumped out somewhere else because they've been meeting there for years. I, I love the fact that, that some of the changes and things that you're going to be doing there to make it better and be more community-oriented. I'm thinking specifically, I'm in the Thai Foundation, and one of the fundraise, big fundraisers we do is a golf tournament, and it'd be great to be able to have that golf tournament right here, right, right in the center part of Tempe. The same thing for the Tempe Union High School has a golf tournament. This would be great for the community to have something like this right here instead of going out of the city. The other thing I was thinking of is, do you reach out to community, to the community or introduce yourself? Welcome, we're here, come on, we're new, come out? Because I'm trying to figure out how you reach out to those organizations that will be able to do those community events, and I don't know if Joel was going to step up and say anything, but that would just be another great venue for music. We are, we are a music city, and we have a lot of great talent here, and it would just be great to be able to start having music there also.
Yeah, see, a lot of things to respond to. Yes, all the community groups, right? We're going to welcome them, and we do that at a lot, similar groups meet at a lot of our golf courses. When it comes to those tournaments, we'll be calling you and asking you to help recruit them at the right time, so count on that. Music events, absolutely. We do a lot of music on the patio, is what we call it, at a lot of our golf courses, and it's very successful. And again, it's a great way to get non-golfers out to the facility. We'll have to play that balancing act of, you know, designing the new clubhouse and getting the right facilities and, and all of that. As far as outreach, we did host multiple community, you know, events in the, back in January, I believe it was, but typically after we take over a golf course, and we will be doing it here, is we do try to have some open houses, where we invite as many people as, as possible. You know, we always lean on our city partners if we can for that outreach. How do we make sure that people are aware of these meetings? I mean, we can do the social media booths out there, and we have a marketing team that can help with that, but typically, city staff can reach far more. So, we will be having open houses, usually a couple of them, and specifically because there's going to be clubhouse design, I, I know, having worked with city staff, we'll be wanting to gather some community input as we enter into that design process.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Devar?
Yeah, perfect, and you're just saying the stuff I'm just dying to hear. Obviously, the pathway and the connectivity from, I mean, that pathway is highly used, and just people going by there and having the opportunity to see they can have breakfast, or to see they can have lunch, or all those things, or the fact, I love the, thank you for bringing it up, the live music stuff, what a great opportunity, outdoors, especially when the weather's great. You think about the things that are happening in South Tempe, and just having more opportunities for people to utilize something, not to golf, but also just to, to enjoy the entertainment. So, I think you're on the right path, and highly encourage you to do that. I think it's set right now with that area to really get some people engaged, especially in that community, and, and utilize that resource. I think you'll find some real benefit from that too, if done right, because I think you have a great opportunity to do that clubhouse right.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else? Further comments, questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, this is also a public hearing item. Does anyone wish to address the council? If so, please get my attention. All right, I'll close the public hearing then. Second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for May 18th, 2023. The next item under the section is 8B3, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of an irrigation easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located in Fairmont Drive west of Diablo Way, and authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an easement agreement and related documents. Is there anyone wishing to address the council on this item? If so, get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments, discussion? All right, second and final public hearing, once again, is on May 18th, 2023. The next item under the section is 8B4, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of two portions of a water and sewer line easement located on the north side of Apache Boulevard west of Smith Road. This is a public hearing item, so is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? If so, get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments, discussion? Seeing none, second and final public hearing on this item is also on May 18th, 2023. The next item under the section is 8B5, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of two portions of a water and sewer line easement located on the north side of Apache Boulevard west of Smith Road. Public hearing item as well? Is it the same one? I know. I don't know, maybe, maybe it's slightly different, slightly different water line easement. Anyone, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? I think I already know the answer on this one. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I, I also know the answer, but comments and discussion from the council. So, once again, the second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 18th, 2023. Item 8B6 has been removed, and that takes us to 8C. Ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. These items were read and introduced back on April 20th, 2023, and votes on all of these items will be taken tonight. First item under the section is 8C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a planned area development overlay to modify development standards and the development plan review for a new 25-story mixed-use development consisting of 453 dwelling units and commercial uses on .67 acres for 16 East University, located at 16 East University Drive. The applicant is Sender Associates Chartered. I know we had a presentation at the last meeting, I see Ms. Sender out there. Would you like to present it in this evening, or your call?
Thank you. Your name is Mayor, members of council, Darren Sender, Sender Associates, Tempe, Arizona. I think you've all seen our presentation, and just for the, for time tonight.
It's all over your face, Councilwoman.
If you have any questions, I can certainly pull up our presentation if you'd like, and may the fourth be with you today as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, so once again, we did have a full presentation on this item during the first public hearing for full transparency. Does anyone on the council have any further comments or questions? Let me also, once again, note that this is a public hearing item, so is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Seeing and hearing nothing else, I'll look to see if there's a motion on item 8C1 moved by Councilmember Bovaro, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next item under the section is 8C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt a resolution for a general plan density map amendment from high density to high-density urban core, adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from GID to MU4, and planned area development overlay to establish development standards, and a development plan review for a new mixed-use development consisting of 390 dwelling units and commercial area for Rio 2100 residences located at 2132 East Cameron Way. The applicant is Barry Riddell Limited Liability Corporation. Just wanted to note too, that a general plan amendment is required on this one, so an affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of the city council, so at least five out of seven. And I will ask, since we have one member absent this evening, Madam City Attorney, how many votes do we need?
You still need five, Mayor.
That's what I wanted to make sure the public knew, so thank you so much. All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so before the, I want to make sure though, this is a public hearing item, so is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I will close that portion. I had a motion by Councilmember Keating first, was it Vice Mayor Adams and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Once again, this will need five votes to pass, so please vote. And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. The second vote here that's required is for the, let's see here. So the first vote actually was on the general plan density map amendment. The second vote here is for the zoning map amendment and planned area development overlay in addition to the development plan review. Is there a motion on this item?
I'm so moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Adams and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Once again, this one is just a simple majority vote. And that item also passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. The next item under the section is 8C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a home company use agreement and lease agreement with Arizona Theater Company for a partnership with the Tempe Center for the Arts. This is a public hearing item as well, so is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. It's been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. That item also passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. The next item under the section is, yep, see, I see celebration there in the audience. I like that. And thank you for hanging in with us last time. I know the meeting went very long last time, but the folks from ATC that are bringing, what, 80 shows to the Tempe Center for the Arts? They really hung in for a long meeting for the first public hearing and so I'm glad we were able to pass this unanimously and also not keep you here till after 10:00 PM. So the next item under the section is 8C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a sewer line easement located on the north side of Apache Boulevard east of McClintock Drive. Once again, this is a public hearing item. Does anyone wish to get my attention to speak this evening? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. That item passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. The last item under the section is 8C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a portion of a waterline easement located on the west side of Scottsdale Road south of State Route 202. This is a public hearing item as well. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? If so, get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Moved by Vice Mayor Adams, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That item passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent, which brings us to item number nine. Current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I will look to the council members for their comments and this evening I will start with Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no announcements tonight.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Chin. Next up, I'm going to go to Councilmember Garland.
Okay. I have one announcement and it is a transformational policing model. It's a training event that comes up. I took this class, it was absolutely amazing. The reason why I'm announcing it is because there are going to be 20 seats that are going to be available to the public to attend this training. So this is a course, this course examines the historical analysis of police distrust in American society and recent conflicts between the police and communities of color. TPM provides awareness into the sensitive and polarizing issues of racial diversity, equity, and inclusion and provides a platform, context, and possible path to restoring trust and healing. It really was an incredible training, so hopefully our staff will be attending or some staff will be attending and that we can really get some of our members of the public to join. If you are interested, please reach out. The information is on this slide or you can reach out to me and I can make sure you get the information. And is that, okay, I have, I have, oh, I'm supposed to do Councilmember?
Oh, Hodge?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, yes, she was actually next, so.
Okay, so I've got one more for me. Madeline McConville is sitting right there in the front. You can wave your hands, everybody knows you. Everybody already knows you. I want to welcome, she is my new council aide and I just want to say thank you very much for being here. Yay! She comes from Madison, Wisconsin, where she earned her bachelor's degree in political science and history and she graduates on Tuesday. Yay, congratulations again, with her master's degree in public policy for ASU, so go Devils. She's been at the city since summer of 2021 as a management fellow through the ASU Marvin Andrews Fellowship in Urban Management Program. She has served as my intern since February. She is extremely passionate about public and local government and she's well-loved at the city and I'm honored to have her as my council aide, so I just will say again, congratulations on your master's degree, moving into a new house, and I'm really looking forward to what we can do together as a team. And then I was told that it's also National Public Safety Recognition Day, so thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
And our other public safety members that are here also, so thank you very much. All right, so I am going to read Councilmember Hodge's slides, but I just want to say first, why didn't Han Solo enjoy his steak?
It was chewy.
How did you know that? Because it was chewy, all right.
That was way too fast, Councilmember Chin. I'm concerned.
My dear friend Stacy Nova sent that to me today, so I had to read that. Okay, so we're going to do our first slide. Councilmember Hodge wants to congratulate our city on its climate action effort. She had the pleasure of adjoining our city manager Andrew Ching and former sustainability and resilience director Braden K. at the Arizona Forward Environmental Excellence Awards to accept the award for climate solutions for our 2022 Climate Action Plan update. We, with our community partners such as nonprofit organizations, residents, and businesses, are continuing to work together to make sure our city is better prepared for the changes that are already happening and ensuring that Tempe continues to be a leader in this space. The Climate Action Plan update was awarded due to the human-centered approach to solutions and actions that it took. It was an honor seeing our city recognize where its long legacy in climate action efforts. And then our next slide. Oh, yeah, now, hold on, I got to find and make sure I got the right one. This was a, Councilmember Hodge had a breakfast with Burdetta, which was really well-attended. The mayor was there. And this is a picture of the group of people that were there and they were able to share some really good information regarding housing and short-term rentals. So I just want to say thank you so much for the people, everybody who attends these events, for all of the council members, but Councilmember Hodge has some really good subjects when she has these events. Community salutes. This was an amazing event that everybody was, that people attended. This is to honor our high school seniors who have committed to the military service. And if you have not attended a community salutes event, you really should go to the one next year. I guarantee you, you're not going to be able to walk out of there without a tear in your eye. It's absolutely incredible when you see these young kids that have committed their next few years or maybe their full career into the military service. The sacrifices that they're making and their families are making are just absolutely incredible and it was just an honor to be there watching that. And Burdetta was a speaker and so was Vice Mayor Adams. Music Under the Stars was an event that happened on April 28th that Councilmember Hodge, it looks like, got to attend with her mother. And it was held at Diablo Stadium. Thank you, can remember Diablo Stadium. And it was high school music bands and groups?
All six high schools.
All six high schools were there, thank you very much. I didn't attend, I was out of town, so I don't, you were there, okay. Thank you very much. All right, she hasn't... Okay, the 5K Run and Walk. May is Mental Health Awareness Month and this year we are bringing the community together for a 5K to learn ways to care for our bodies and our brains. On Saturday at Kiwanis Park, Care7 will host a family-friendly 5K walk-run you can complete at your own pace. No racing experience is necessary. The race starts at 8:00 AM and the packet pickup is at 7:00 AM. And I believe that's it. I just want to say, Councilmember Hodge is not here, she had to leave for a personal family issue and I would just like to say that, that all of us up here are sending us, sending her our love and we hope that you will keep her family and her in your prayers.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. In these divided times, I hope I can give some words of healing as the council's biggest Star Trek fan when I say Happy Star Wars Day to all Tempeans out there. May the fourth be with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Next up, Councilmember Bovaro.
So many nerds.
Oh, my God. I feel like Keith Burke just took offense to that. I saw the, I saw the arms go up in the back.
We're going to bring it back. Movie in the Park returns to Kiwanis Park on Friday evenings this May. Spring lineup of Tempe's free family movie series features Coco, Cars, Kung Fu Panda, and Soul. The movies begin at dusk approximately 7:00 PM. Come hang out and play at the mobile team, with the mobile team before the shows begin. Visit tempe.gov/familyfund for more details. Great place to bring, I remember when my kids were about that age, it was perfect for something to do because it's always a struggle to figure out what you want to do with the kids, which leads me into the next thing. Got to have, figure out what you want to do with the kids. So summer, obviously is coming around the corner and just like I struggled on doing, what am I going to do with the kids for the duration and getting them involved and engaged is awesome. So look at, go ways and, or looking at opportunities in the Tempe Opportunities brochure. It's jam-packed with quality classes, programs, camps, including arts, boating, exercise, and fitness, sports, Sims, and special interests and more. Registration is now open for Tempe residents. General registration opens Monday, May 8th. Summer camps begin mid-May and most of the programs start beginning of June. Visit tempe.gov/play to view the brochure and register and utilize that opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Bovaro. Next up, Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, tomorrow is Cinco de Mayo, so I want to wish everyone happy Cinco de Mayo. Tempe will be celebrating this Saturday, May 6th, with the Fiesta de Taco event at Tempe Beach Park with live music, Joel, live music, art installations, and more tacos than you can shake a stick at. It's for sure, it will be a fun festival. For more information and to buy tickets, visit fiestade taco.com. My second announcement is Kiwana Swim Lessons. It's heating up, which means it's time to get into the water. Learning to swim is a life skill that should be available to everyone and I'm proud that the city of Tempe makes this a priority by offering swim lessons. Lessons are available for swimmers of all ages and skill levels at Tempe Public Pools. Children as young as eight months old can learn to swim in parent-assisted lessons. Classes are also available for older children and adults. Visit tempe.gov/swim for times, locations, and registration. Also, Clark Park Pool has been one of my top priorities and I'm told it will be open in November, so more people, even more people will be able to learn to swim, so I'm so excited about that. Park and Rec Survey. Speaking of our amazing parks and recreational offerings, the Parks and Rec Department would like the public, would like public's input for making space and equity study for parks and recreational survey. The survey is open online on the Tempe Forum website until May 22nd, so please consider participating in the survey. My third announcement is Theater for Young Audiences Festival at TCA. First of all, I just want to say I'm so excited to have TCA be so much more activated now. It's been a long time coming, I'm super excited to see that happen. So next week, Tempe Center for the Arts is hosting the Theater for Young Audiences Festival and National Conference. Nearly 300 national and international delegates will descend on the Valley May 10th through 12th where they will explore innovation in theater for young audiences. As part of the program, TCA will present a family day on Saturday, May 13th, and that's open to the public, so please, if you're looking for things to do, please consider bringing your children down that day. There will be free hands-on art activities throughout the day. Get tickets now at tempecenterforthearts.com. My final announcement, I would like to welcome Brooke St. George, who was born and raised in Tempe. She's a former member of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission and graduate of Corona del Sol. Go Astex.